Hello and welcome to Legislative Report. I'm State Representative Mario Scavelo. On this morning's show, I'm so honored to be here with the two of the newest county commissioners in Monroe County, Commissioner Charlie Garris and Commissioner John Moyer. And what a pleasure. In the last six, seven months, what I've been hearing from the community and the things that you're doing here, both of you. So first, welcome to the show.
Thank you. Nice to be here.
I think the best, I think for us, why don't we talk about what you walked into in January when you were elected? Because I think it was a real eye-opener for you folks.
Yeah, it certainly was an eye-opener because if I'm not mistaken, our first public meeting was January 3rd at 9:30 in the morning. We were told to be here at 9 o'clock to sign a note. Okay, well, you show up at 9 o'clock and pretty soon we're putting our signatures on $7.5 million note that was designed to provide us with enough money to keep operating from the end of December until the taxes started rolling in in March and April.
Wow.
And, you know, it's nice when a county has the luxury of having some cash coming forward from prior years. We thought at the time that we took office that the amount that we had in that repository was around $800,000. Subsequently, we found out it's less than $100,000. So if you take the rule of thumb that there ought to be 4% or 5% left over each year, we were far under that amount. So that was welcome to Monroe County. Here, sign your names to $7.5 million.
And I thought we were bad. The first year when I came in, it was $700,000. And so, $100,000, my gosh.
There really wasn't sufficient funds to cash paychecks next week.
There had to be, however, signs. You just don't wake up on January 1 and realize that, that they didn't realize, the prior board of commissioners had to realize that this was an issue, that this was a problem. And could have made some decisions back earlier not to have put the county in that position.
Well, I think, I can't speak for Charlie, but the prior board passed what was considered a whopping tax increase of four mils. It was suggested to us that the first thing we do is reopen the budget and roll that back. Personally, I thought, well, with a four mil increase, how could you not make ends meet? I've found since then that we're very fortunate that we went four mils. Certainly, I'm not looking at a tax increase at the end of this year, but I'm finding that more stuff comes out of the woodwork every day that you didn't know you were responsible for. And guess what? None of it works the way that it's supposed to. All of it needs more money, needs more attention, needs more care and handling than previously was thought. So.
But you definitely, both of you are hands-on. From what I hear, you're in the community, involved in the community, and not afraid to give your opinions. Sometimes, of course, no matter when we make a decision, someone out there is going to like it and some is not. But at least you know, you wear your feelings. And I think that's so important and so unique today from elected officials that you're getting the truthful answer from them. You're not getting one answer and then it's going, and you go somewhere else and you're going to give another answer. And you're consistent, your message is consistent.
Well, that's very important. Otherwise, you get confused, the public gets confused, the 600-some employees of the county get confused as to your mission and what you're trying to accomplish here in Monroe County. But getting back to the budget, looking backwards, we could not have solved all the problems that would have needed to be solved to open a budget and then close it within a certain timeframe.
Yeah.
So it was a wise decision not to reopen the budget and live with what the previous commissioners had done. And it's been very important, both of us review every invoice that comes through every week. And it's so important to do that, not to look for errors, although we find some now and then, but to get a handle on where this $99 million that we're responsible for goes. I mean, $99 million is a ton of money.
You know, in ten years.
And you look, and the average citizen says, what do I get for that?
Yeah. You know, that grew 30 million in 10 years?
Yeah.
It grew about $30-some-odd million in 10 years.
Really?
That's the growth.
From when you were commissioner.
From when I was commissioner.
To today.
Today, by 30 million. So just to, you know, give you an example, the spending, you can't continue, you've got to live within your means. And guys, you talk about it all the time.
Well, and we were very supportive of the governor's budget in terms of, the only way to control taxes, as you well know, is to reduce your spending.
Correct.
You can fiddle around with reassessing property, you can talk about levying this or levying that, but the truth of the matter is, you need to get a handle on the spending. And I think that anything the legislature can do to help him and us do that is a step in the right direction.
I think you're going to see some great things from this governor. You know, he walked into office on January 1, the same time as you folks, and he had a $4 billion hole in his budget.
Kind of makes $7.5 million look like nothing.
You know, just think, $4 billion, he had, he's actually a little bit older, but 3.1 billion stimulus money that he no longer has, and he had $1 billion in revenue shortfall on top of that, and now balanced the budget, you know? And he did it without raising taxes. And he had, we had to make some sharp cuts. But by doing those cuts, by making those cuts, I think the state is so much better today because if not, any dollar you spend in the prior year, the revenue isn't there the following year, it doubles. It doubles. So it's like, for example, in the county, if they had a vision that, yeah, we're spending too much and cut back, whatever they cut back, you know, would have been a double in the opposite direction for you. So if you spent five bucks more than in 2011, that is 10 bucks today because you didn't have, you have to first find the money to pay back what you didn't have. And then you've got to go and now make a decision, what am I going to do? How am I going to fund this?
You know, it was truly amazing how many emails we received, support this, support that. I said to John, I'm not going to write one letter for increased spending. I believe what the governor's doing is absolutely correct. You've got to cut expenses. And we see these expenses, you know, half of our budget is things that come through the Commonwealth, the funds come through the Commonwealth. And where some of those funds are spent just drives me crazy, okay? Even at the county level, the other half of the budget that we spend, we are constantly on people's backs about, don't travel, cut expenses, let's live within our budget. Raising taxes is no longer an option here in Monroe County. People can no longer afford a tax increase in this county. So consequently, we are out to really keep it level or reduce the cost if at all possible. And I think you can always look back and say, oh, it's somebody else's fault. It wasn't too many years ago that the $100,000 that Charlie and Suzanne and I inherited was something in the neighborhood of $14 million. So did they, did they spend more money than they had? Absolutely. We happen to be in office at a time where we can't allow that to continue.
Yeah.
So I'm not suggesting that by the time we leave office, the fund balance will be back to $14 million. But I'd love to leave office with no increase in taxes and to get the machine working the way that it should. I think that's what we've spent the first six months on, just proving to the employees here that we're not out for the quick fix, that we didn't get in this hole overnight and we're not going to climb out of it overnight. But, you know, if we can continue to provide service, improve the quality of the service, and keep expenses where they are, you know, I think that's pretty much a win. But you know, the future's not very bright because we're facing increased health care. We are facing increased pension costs because our pension plan is not earning, giving us the returns that we need to pay the pension, so we have to contribute towards that. This year, I think we're going to split 3.3 million into the pension plan. We had, we were notified that our health care costs were going up 1.3 million, was it? And we've been working on this health care plan for, I tell you, we've interviewed more health care providers that I want to talk to the rest of my life. And John's been working very hard to bring that cost in line.
That's fabulous. You know, you guys are running, I'm listening to you, you operate in the government like a business. And it should be a business. You really are.
Well, except I've often thought of that, Mario. Both of us come from a business background.
Yeah.
But when you think of a business and you begin to get into the financial straits, you think to yourself, well, what do I do? Well, I either stop providing a service or I increase my revenues. Well, increase revenues, the only way to do that is taxes.
And you can.
And in terms of reducing services, so much of what we do, we can't reduce. I mean, what do we do? Say the correctional facility is a $13 million drain a year, let's just furlough everybody and turn, can't do it.
Can't do it.
So it's, you need to operate it as a business, but I don't know of any business that you have to keep running even though you see so few returns on some of what you spend money on.
But you know what? You're watching your dollars. And to me, when you, you're really protecting the taxpayer dollars and the conversation that we're having here, that's what I see. And I think that's unique. I really do.
You know, mentioning the jail, this morning, I just finished going through bills. We spend $13,000 a week to feed the prisoners and the guards out there at lunchtime. $13,000.
Just lunch.
Now, tell that to the average citizen of Monroe County.
Wow.
$13,000. And it's, I mean, nobody wants to hear that the correctional facility needs any more money.
Yeah.
But if we, if you've lived here long enough, you think of it as the new jail. Well, the new jail is more than 20 years old.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, it's a facility that was built for between 200 and 250, and it's not uncommon for us to be housing 400 people.
400, wow.
So you don't put 400 people in a facility for 20 years and not spend money on refurbishing and doing the necessary preventive maintenance and figure it's going to last forever.
You know, the county population when that prison was built was approximately 89,000, 90,000 people. And we were knocking on the door of 180,000 before we had this recession. I believe if the, if we had had the census a year earlier, the numbers would have been a lot different, you know? But, so your population in the prison doubled, just like the, like the population in the county doubled. Unfortunately, the bad guys come as well. And what a shame, you know, because that is something that you can't do without.
Well, we're at a point at the jail where we need, we need some capital infusion in the, we need a new kitchen, we need a new boiler room, we need a new laundry. And so hopefully, we'll embark on those programs in the next year or so because they really do have to be done. And currently, we're spending almost up to $1 million on new cameras and new electric locks on the doors and those kinds of things, which the, the old system is frankly, it's wore out.
I think we at the state need to look at helping you with some of that stuff so that we can hold the line on spending here. And if we can, we'll maybe look at the LSA grants for a chunk of it to try to help you. Because to me, it's so important that we do hold your spending in line. That money is there. And if we can help you a little bit, let's look at that as a possibility.
Well, it seems, Mario, and I know you've been an outspoken proponent of doing something to revise the school funding formula based on the whole harmless.
Yeah.
It's affecting us as well.
Sure.
I mean, the school population went up, and guess what? So did ours.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's a good point.
And we're still funded on the basis of whatever it was that existed back in the 1990s. So, you know, I chuckle when I hear, I'm from the state and I'm here to help you, but whatever you can do would be greatly appreciated.
I could tell you this, the fact that this lawsuit is.
Sorry, I couldn't help it.
No, 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 I appreciate it. I appreciate it. This lawsuit that we, that we are, you know, talking about, that, you know, is being put together, having that lawsuit, the threat of that lawsuit out there has helped me in getting that money for the schools.
Just a threat.
Just a threat. Think about it. Because they see, they see that I've got, I believe I have some legitimate challenge here because we're not funding at a census. And why do we take censuses every 10 years if we're not going to use it to fund?
We take a census so we can go through nine iterations of who's going to represent us next year.
Yeah, yeah. And that's still ongoing. You know what the cost of that is going to be when it's all said and done? Between all of the professionals that are involved in this, it's, it's just unimaginable.
Well, even the fallout from that hasn't hit us yet, but you know that when it does become final and the next time that these folks are up for election, we're going to have to split two of our departments. And, you know, why? Just because we moved from a fifth to a fourth-class county, not that we need to have another George Ward and another Helen Decidu to oversee those two departments. But, you know, that comes with an additional cost.
We can eliminate that, by the way. We just delayed it, but we can keep the two together.
Push it back farther.
We could push it back farther. We can eliminate totally for your county, so.
That would be wonderful.
So if, you know, we have.
I haven't heard either one of them say, boy, this is, I can't wait because we need to do this.
Then, then let's, let's look at this and I will draft the legislation to just stop it from happening. We can, we can do that.
There really is no reason for it.
Yeah. We can, we can create the legislation that, you know, that the commissioners at some point, if they decide, they would just request from the, from the, from the state to allow you to do it.
Well, here in, here in Monroe County, we have tremendous space needs in our courthouse, in our admin building. And we're working diligently now, almost every day, on some sort of a plan to make room for all these kinds of things, the expansion of all the county offices. And we have a plan and we think it's a viable plan. And I can assure you, we're not going to spend $50 million of the taxpayers' money to build a new courthouse.
Yeah.
We're going to do it differently. And I think it'll be viable. And we've already had discussions with the president judge, we've told her our thoughts and process on this.
Good.
And so we'll see where that goes. I think the position that we've taken is, let's take a look at what we as a county are obligated to provide and let's do the best job of providing those services. Some of these things that we've sort of accepted responsibility for that are not mandated, perhaps it's time to look elsewhere and say, maybe that should be provided by somebody other than Monroe County taxpayer.
That's a great point. That's a great point. By the way, just to go back to the, the savings is approximately half a million dollars. You know, Senator Baker and myself were the ones that put, put the law in to delay it for the, for the four years. So it saves you.
It's like quarter, quarter of a mil of tax.
Yeah, that you would have had to spend. And so let's, let's do it. We can save taxpayers' dollars. And to me, we'll put, we'll put that in and hopefully I'll get it done before the end of the year. If not, we'll do it early next year. At least we have the time and so we can.
I'll mark that on my tickle file.
Okay. And just remind me, okay? But we will get that done. So, you know, let's, some of the accomplishments that you've had, and I know it's a short period of time here, but I know that you've got, well, let's, let me change focus here. You've got some negotiating to do, I guess, with some contracts coming up. And I've been reading about it in the newspaper, but sometimes, you know, they don't always print what you say accurately.
Really?
Oh, that's why I do these shows. And I mean that with all sincerity. We don't, there's, you know, there's no script. You can see the way we're talking here. These shows are exactly that, you know? And I think that's why the public out there loves it, because they know that there's no script and that we, you know, this is, it's like a live tape and it's not edited. But, so for me, anyway, it's a way of getting the message out there. So if you, if there's anything that you think that needs to be clarified, guys, well, this is the time.
Well, no, we do have some negotiations coming up on, on union contracts and contrary to what was written in the paper, I'm not the kind of guy that's out to bust unions or anything else. But our health care in the county is probably the major sticking point. And personally, I've probably spent more time on it since taking office than any other single thing. And the simple truth of the matter is, we can't continue to provide the very excellent health care that we provide at the minuscule cost that we pass off to our employees. So it's another one of these things of, I think the employees would be much more receptive to what we're going to propose if five years ago, it had gone up a little bit, and 10 years ago, it had gone up a little bit, and two years ago, it had gone up a little bit. We're past the point of being able to little bit it, you know? We're going to have to come up with something. And obviously, when you're making a decision like that, it's hard not to think of the $20,000 a year person who's a single parent and trying to raise three kids.
Yeah.
But personally, I've found that when you, you try to attach faces with some of the decisions you make, you end up making the wrong decisions.
Right decisions, yeah.
So the, the major, I think, discussion, I don't mean that it's, I don't think that it's going to be an easy one, an easy set of discussions, but I think our, our biggest challenge is to get our employees, unionized and non-unionized, to understand that this is what we're attempting to do. We can't continue to just keep bumping up taxes of a mil or two mils or four mils. We've got to, like everything else, begin to live within our means.
You know what? A good example of what you're saying is, look what's happened to the school districts. The cuts the Pocono Mountain has had to make because, you know, they didn't make cuts in the past. And at one time, they hit a brick wall, $20 million shortfall, you know? And so, and you pretty much explained pretty much what happened there in some of these other school districts. And hopefully, they, they see that sign that they need to.
Well, when you talk to the leaders of industry in Monroe County and what, in the private world, what they pay towards their health care and what public employees pay towards their health care, there's no comparison. And so consequently, industries, private industry realized a long time ago that they cannot carry that burden and still sell their products.
Yeah.
As a county, we cannot carry that burden and still maintain a livable tax level in Monroe County. So the employees will have to share more of the burden as we go forward in the future.
You know, we just started, the legislature never paid into their, into their pension, I mean, excuse me, well, we paid into the pension, but in the health care, we never contributed. We now contribute to the health care. And this past year, they just negotiated a $3 million savings for the, for the legislature in savings in health care. And I have to tell you, you know, by changing different things, and so we're looking at it also at the state level. Our spending is, has come down dramatically. And it's something that it needs to be done. We can't continue to say, well, we need $2 million, let's raise taxes.
Yep.
And that's what's, that's been the, in everything. It's been in schools, it's been, it's been here at the county, it seems. Twice in four years, they've raised taxes.
Whatever happened to your whams in Harrisburg?
They're gone.
They're gone? No more big checks?
There are no more big checks to hand out. And you know what? In a way, it was good that they were. Although, I have to tell you, we, we used them to help agencies that were really hurting. But, but they're gone. There's no more of that funny money. It's taxpayers' dollars. And, you know, when you don't have dollars, you can't, I doubt if you'll ever see them again. And I don't, you know, after, the first year was tough, but then after that, people realized, you know, they don't have them anymore? And you're not playing one person against another? You know, there was one legislator, I'm going to nameless, but he used to have a party at a, at a, at a location, and he'd hand out 30 checks, 30 big cardboard checks. And it'd be, it'd be an event. And, you know, you just, you know, honestly, it's taxpayer dollars.
We could do that too, Mario. But every check would be about $1.95. But the real gorilla in the back of this room in, in terms of health care is what's going to happen with the federal health care mandates.
Ah.
You know, it was suggested yesterday, tongue-in-cheek, that we just say, hey, go out next year and find your own insurance, we're not going to offer it. And somebody raised the question of, well, there'd be a $2,000 an employee fine. Well, $2,000 times 600 employees is $1,200,000. It's going to cost us more than $1,200,000 to provide health care. Now, will somebody figure out how to close that loophole? Certainly.
Aight.
And it's not, we have the obligation, I think, to provide health care first to our employees and secondarily to our employees' families.
Yes.
And that's what we're trying to do at the minimum cost to both the employee and the residents of the county.
And there's no doubt in my mind, the two, you two gentlemen, will do that.
What's the estimated cost for our health care bill? It's right around $10 million total.
$10 million.
I mean, that will be the cost.
Wow.
Before we get into some of the permutations and before we ask for contributions from the employees.
That's better than double than 10 years.
$10 million.
That's better than double than 10 years.
Yeah. And, you know, it's not all the stick. The carrot has to be wellness programs in some sort. We did a survey within the past week or so of how many people use tobacco within the existing system now, and 18 people admitted that they did. 17, I assume 17 of the 18 said, I'd really like not to, but I do. Well, part of this has to be facilitating that ability to get rid of such a nasty habit. And is it good for the employee? Yes. Is it good for the county? Yes. Is it good for the health care cost? Eventually, yes. So who knows, Mario? It's, you plant a lot of seeds, some of them develop, and some of them wither and die.
Well, I love your ideas. I really do. And you're really, you know, it's, it's great to see that you really work as a team.
I do want to thank you, though, in the county home, you didn't reduce the money coming from the state this year, which was very important to Monroe County. That's because he's so close to being of an age where he might.
Yeah, I might have to be there someday.
But I have to tell you, in the first five months, our county home is $800,000 in the red.
Wow.
And we run consistently about 96, 97, 98% occupied. It's not that we don't have a lot, we have a lot of vacant beds out there.
What's your contribution from the, from the budget, from the county budget?
Last year, we sent out $960,000 to the county home.
And that's still better. I remember back in the early, in early 2000, it was.
It was much higher.
It was much higher.
Yeah, well, we are reminded of the days when it was three, three and a half million.
Yeah. Though that was after me. I know we put in about two, but it just kept growing and there was no, oh, wow.
But the Medicare reimbursement last October went down 11%, so that's had a several-hundred-thousand-dollar effect on our bottom line out there. And the cost of running the county home is, is always going up. At this point in time, our county home needs a cash infusion for redecorating and so on. It's a wonderful place, it's clean, the food is good, the patients are taken well care of. But I don't know how much longer the county can sustain those kinds of losses and still have a viable place, the Essa County Home.
Good point.
In view of the fact that there's only three, 33 county homes left in the Commonwealth.
Yeah, many of the counties.
Most counties have sold them off.
Yeah. And most of the counties, some of them are actually bigger counties than you that have sold them off.
Yes, Carman County got rid of theirs last year, we were told.
We were talking about budgets and how they've grown. In the last, in the, in the, in the eight years, the state budget went from approximately $21 billion to a proposed $29 billion budget in eight years. $29 billion proposed. And it took the Commonwealth over 200 years to grow a budget to $21 billion. And in eight years, see what, what happened? So, so we're right approximately at a $27 billion, 600 million budget. And people are complaining, but just understand, it's still a significant increase over the base of where that budget was. It just, it was, it was allowed to grow. The last four years, the county, the state budget grew at rates that it should never have grown at, with, with dollars from DC, which was wrong.
Well, Mario, you know as well as I do, it's the mere fact that nobody watches a store. It's always nice to be able to fulfill the requests from people.
Yeah.
But the other side of the equation is always, where's the revenue going to come from to be able to satisfy that? And, you know, it's, it's a lot easier to say yes than it is to say no.
Sure. I could tell you this, you know, we have 10 reps here in Monroe between the senators and the, and the reps, and we, and we gladly, anytime that you have an issue, just please contact us.
Which rep?
Well, you can, I leave it up to you. Well, you can, I leave it up to you, but, you know, Representative Brown, myself, you know, Representative Carroll, Representative Pye, we're there for you. We're there for you. And the six senators. And hopefully, hopefully with this redistricting, there'll be one senator from Monroe that you'll have a little bit more power in the Senate. And not to say that the six that have been here have worked with us.
Yep.
Well, listen, gentlemen, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to meet with you, and I'm sure that, I'd like to do this on every six months if it's possible, to just to rehash and discuss what the issues are here in the county.
Well, you needn't worry about it, but you just want to see how much grayer our hair comes over that period of time.
Well, mine can't get gray anymore. See, you don't see it anymore. Thank you, guys.
You're very welcome.
That's all the time we have for today's program.